This is the third Tuesday in the month, Wapaka City Council meeting.
This is the second meeting in April, and this is when we have our annual organization meeting, which happens after the elections in the first part of April. I call this meeting to order. Today is April 16th, 2019, and it is 6:00 PM. And we're going to start actually with the oath of office for the people that were just elected. If you want to just stand up at your spot, the ones that were just elected. Should be five of you. All right, good count. And we'll let Henry. Henry, you want to hopefully this works.
I'm the minister of the oath of office. So what I tend to usually do. Is it on? Okay. Man, I need four hands here.
So we're going to administer the oath of the office, so please raise your right hand. I state your name.
I.
Have been elected to the position of alderperson.
Elected to the position of alderperson.
For the city of Wapaka to affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin, and will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability under the penalties of perjury, I do, I will.
What you said.
Okay. Congratulations. That was a little awkward. I do need you to sign a few things. One thing.
So we ordered a name tag.
Please sign. We could have just put those on their desk. You know what? You could have just put them on their desk.
I got one here. Hopefully it works. We'll see. No, it doesn't. I'll borrow yours.
Thank you.
Well, congratulations, I think, to everybody that was reelected. We do have one new member on our council, and that's Dimitri Martin. Just wanted to introduce him. Dimitri, you have any thing you had ready or want to say?
I don't really have anything prepared, but I'm, I'll just say I'm grateful to be here, and I'm looking forward to playing an important part in the council and learning a lot from all of you. So, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. All right, the organization meeting does have an agenda, and that agenda is in front of you. We would need a motion to approve that agenda.
Second.
Motion by Hackett, second by Keeland that we approve the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against. Motion carried. This is also the meeting where we elect a council president who serves for one year term, and at this time, we would take nominations for the election, or for the council president. Anybody would like?
I will nominate Paul Mayo.
We have nominations.
Second.
We don't need a second here, but yeah, that's okay. Do we have any other nominations? Any other nominations? Okay, so we have one person that was nominated. We'll just go ahead and vote on that. All of those that are in favor of Paul Mayo as the council president for another year, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against. Motion carried. So Paul, congratulations.
Thank you all.
That's good. Then we don't have to change your, oh, it doesn't say council president on his name tag. All right. Okay, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Paul, but I want to explain something that Sandy put together for you that's on your desk, and it's this, it shows all the individuals on the committees and stuff like that. And up at the top in red, over on the left-hand side where it says "term expires," those are the individuals where their term expired at the end of, at the end of March, and those are the people we need to replace. The ones that are in the middle, so if you're in the middle, you're still on that committee. And those individuals that are not on council, that are the public at whole, they're still on those committees too. And it actually says what year their, their term is up. And then way over on the right, those are the individuals that I am recommending that we appoint to those committees and commissions. So Paul, go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. Mayor Smith has appointed the following persons to the Board of Review, Board of Appeals, and City Plan Commission. Board of Review, Steve Hackett. Board of Appeals, Gene Wasserberg, Gene Grenley, Mayor Brian Smith. The mayor's nomination for the City Plan Commission is Alderman Alan Keeland. I would need a motion of approval for these nominations and a second.
Second.
Moved by Chestnut, second by Olson, that these nominations are approved. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Also for City Planning Commission are Mayor Brian Smith, Eric Olson, and Justin Barrens. Mayor Smith has appointed the following persons to the Library Board, Park and Rec Board, Police and Fire Commission, Airport Board, Community Development Authority, Recycling District, Wapaka Area Fire District, Wellhead Protection Commission, Historic Preservation Commission, Emergency Planning Committee, Weyahab Board of Directors, the Historical Society, Joint Board of, Joint Review Board, East Central Planning Commission, Wapaka Area Convention and Visitors Bureau Room Tax Board, Community Development Block Grant Committee, Wapaka Area Convention and Visitors Bureau Tourism Promotion Committee, and Wapaka Senior Center Advisory Board. For the Library Board, Kyle Pulvermacher, Youth Representatives, Lori Chestnut, Paul Hagan, Julie Iden, Joe McCrone, Mary Zimmerman, Erica Weingarten. Park and Recreation Board, Sawyer Sopa, Youth Representative, Katie Ash, Youth Representative, Gabe Klug, Alternate Youth Representative, Eric Olson, Dave Peterson, Pat Fair, there's a Town of Dayton representative, Town of Farmington representative, and Mary Trice from the Town of Wapaka. Police and Fire Commission, Mary Fair. Airport Board, Mason Hepner, Youth Representative, Leota Studzinski, Alternate Youth Representative. Community Development Authority, Mayor Brian Smith, Lori Chestnut, Scott Puchatsky, Dimitri Martin. Recycling District, Alan Keeland, Dimitri Martin. Wapaka Area Fire District, Mayor Brian Smith, Mary Fair. Wellhead Protection Commission, Jessica Beckendorf, Robert Welch. Historic Preservation Commission, Lori Chestnut, Autumn Heisler, Youth Representative, Charlotte Buckman, Alternate Youth Representative, Scott Christie. Emergency Planning Committee, Anna Pulvermacher, Youth Representative, Taylor Carson, Alternate Youth Representative.
If I don't table it right away, we'll.
Paul Mayo, Steve Del Fos.
Thank you.
Andy Carlin, Steve Hackett, Eric Helverson, Sharon Soar, Bryant Esch, Audrey Rosen, Jeff True, Margot Deek, Jerry Duman, Brian Holzell, Justin Barrens, and Henry Velicker. Weyahab Board of Directors, Scott Puchatsky. Historical Society, Lori Chestnut. Joint Review Board, Steve Hackett. East Central Planning Commission, Mayor Brian Smith, Paul Mayo, Alternate. Wapaka Area Convention and Visitors Bureau Room Tax Board, Mary Fair, Kathy Kaza. Community Development Block Grant Committee, Dave Peterson, Julie Thompson, Paula Oswich, I think, Dick Phillipson. Wapaka Area Convention Visitors and Visitors Bureau Tourism Promotion Committee, Paul Mayo, Kathy Kaza. Wapaka Senior Center Advisory Board, Dave Peterson, Gene Tonowitz, Bob Tronson. At this time, I'd need a motion and a second to approve these appointments of the mayor.
Second.
Moved by Hackett, second by Peterson, to approve mayor's appointments to these committees, boards, and commissions. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries.
Thank you, Paul. Appreciate that. At this time then, we are at the end of our organization meeting, so before we go to our regular scheduled city council meeting, I would need a motion to adjourn this organization meeting. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hagan, second by Chestnut, that we adjourn our organization meeting. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against. Motion carried. We are adjourned at 6:11 PM. Let's go right to the regular city council meeting then. Again, welcome everybody to our regular city council meeting. Today is Tuesday, April 16th, 2019, and I call this meeting to order, and let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll ask Sandy to read the Clerk's open meeting statement for us.
This meeting in all means that the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the press in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so that citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And also take role for us, Sandy.
Brian Smith.
Here.
Steve Hackett.
Here.
Lori Chestnut.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Alan Keeland.
Here.
Scott Puchatsky.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
Dimitri Martin.
Here.
Mary Fair.
Here.
And Eric Olson.
Here.
Ten present, we have a quorum.
Okay, next is the consent agenda. This is the agenda where we have all of the items on that agenda that we can vote on with one motion, unless there is a council member or staff that would like to see any of those individual items that are listed moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda. And if so, then this would be the time for you to tell me that you would like to see those moved, and we can change those to the regular agenda. Anybody would like to see any changes? Dimitri, I should tell you too, if you have questions, don't be afraid to ask too, I mean, as we go through.
I, there are issues with the questions I have, but I'm going to bring up some of those on an individual basis.
Okay. All right. Okay, so on the consent agenda, did we have a motion? I'm sorry.
I'm moved to approve it.
Okay, thank you. Motion by Keeland.
Second.
Second by Olson, that we approve the consent agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against. Motion carried under the regular agenda. Sandy, it looks like you have one addition.
Addendum number one was uploaded to the city website on Monday, April 15th, adding number nine, new business letter G, resolution number 1428.
All right, so please add that to your agenda. Otherwise, oh, number eight A, we aren't ready to move forward with the second reading of that ordinance, 0319. We still have some answers to find out here, so if you want to just cross that off, we're going to table that. So it's not going away, it's just being tabled. So you, maybe we'll see that next meeting, but probably more into June, because that's when the next time the police, or the fire district meets again. Okay, with that said, those two items, we need a motion to approve the regular agenda.
Second.
Sorry, it was to whom? Motion by Dimitri? Thank you. Motion by Martin, second by Peterson, that we approve the regular agendas. Print it. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against. Motion carried. Page 99 of your packet is the Code of Ethics. This was started almost 30 years ago now, and then updated back in 2014, but this is something that we asked the city council and all of our committees and commissions that they go through this and make sure that they understand that. We're not going to go through it line by line, but by approving this tonight, you are telling us that you have read through it and that you are approving our Code of Ethics. So unless there's any questions on that, again, we'd be looking for a motion to approve the Code of Ethics.
Move to approve the Code of Ethics.
Second.
Motion by Chestnut, second by Keeland, that we approve the Code of Ethics and place it on file. Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against. Motion carried. All right, a couple of proclamations. They are mayor's proclamations, but I'm going to ask, I didn't warn them ahead of time, but Justin, if you would read the Earth Day proclamation for us?
Absolutely, Mayor. I knew it was coming. Page 104.
Well, since you knew that, Andrew, you're up next, okay?
I knew because he told.
In the early 1960s, Senator Gaylord Nelson of Wisconsin began a movement to highlight mounting environmental problems. Earth Day continues to promote environmental awareness and celebrate the limitless possibilities for all people to care for our land, air, rivers, lakes, and oceans. Earth Day is an international phenomenon observed in more than 180 countries, planning every, or spanning every continent. Individuals and communities come together with a unified purpose to address issues such as climate change, species extinction, managing growth, economics, and emerging technology. Whereas the city of Wapaka's land, waters, air, and other natural resources should be protected and preserved at all costs, this goal of environmental sustainability is legacy we wish to leave for those who follow us. And whereas the city of Wapaka supports and strengthens its commitment to the environment by working together to promote these natural resources is essential to the continued quality of life of the residents of the Badger State. And whereas the city of Wapaka recognizes the spirit of Earth Day as a global event that celebrates environmental achievements and raises awareness for environmental issues, and provides a unique opportunity for people across the state and nation to promote environmental stewardship by setting goals and taking actions to lessen the negative impact on the environment. Now therefore, Brian Smith, Mayor Brian Smith, on behalf of the city of Wapaka, do hereby proclaim April 22nd, 2019, as Earth Day, and welcome the support of all residents in our quest to create a clean, green, and healthy Wapaka.
Thank you, Justin. All right, and then next up is the Arbor Day proclamation, and we're going to ask Andrew to read that for us.
Thank you, Mayor. This one starts on page 105, the Arbor Day proclamation. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air produce, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees, whenever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, and whereas Wapaka has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation, and desires to continue its tree-planting ways. Now therefore, I, Brian Smith, Mayor of the city of Wapaka, Wisconsin, do hereby proclaim the 26th of April, 2019, as Arbor Day in the city of Wapaka, and I urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and to support our city's urban forestry program, and further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations. Dated this 16th day of April, 2019.
Thank you, Andrew.
Yep.
Appreciate that. All right, next up, we have public input. This is for non-agenda items. If there's anybody in the audience, or staff, or council members that would like to speak to the council on a non-agenda item, just step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record. Limit your discussion to three minutes or less. Staff or council, if you have anything, you can raise your hand, and we'll take them in that order. Seeing none, we'll move on then to our department head reports. And Kathy, you're first up.
Thank you, Mary. Good evening, council members. My report begins on page six of the packet. We're continuing to do our year-end reporting to the state of Wisconsin. We have a few more reports to get in this month and next month. We will have, we are on schedule to have the auditors present their findings to the council on the second meeting in May. And as of right now, the general fund was on a positive note in the end of 2018, which is a good thing for our, for bond rating and for going ahead. We've engaged RW Baird with a minimal contract that'll be charged off to the TIF districts to help us in providing council and the joint review board a TIF report this year. And one of the things that we are going to be looking at is doing some projections on the TIDS and showing what, what we can accomplish with what time they have left, and give some options to the council. Otherwise, I don't have anything else.
All right, thank you, Kathy. Any questions for Kathy? Comments? All right, let's move over to the library. Peg?
Thank you, Mayor Smith. So we've been working with the school district, and now we have a bus that stops at the library after school. We're very pleased to be recognized as another place of learning outside of school. It is Poetry Month, and we're celebrating with the world's longest poet, poem in our library and a typewriter, so you can create old-fashioned poems that we can add to that cranky to be the world's longest poem. Also, we have a program next Thursday night, Make a Pocket for Your Poem, and that pocket can then double as a pocket for your cellphone if you choose to use it that way after the program. That's on Thursday, the 25th, from 3:00 to 7:00. We also have a genealogy program. We're partnering with the WAGS organization, the Wapaka Area Genealogy Society, and we're going to have a graveyard walk on the 27th of April. It's a Saturday, and hopefully the weather will cooperate with us at that point. We're getting ready for our big summer library program. It's really a learning opportunity for kids and families. We're providing a lot of information, a lot of fun learning, fun learning, and the theme this year is space and space exploration, so it's called "The Universe of Stories." So I hope that you'll take a look at that and see if you can join us for some of those programs and the reading event that will take place. I did pass out some brochures about the programs that we have that are digital resources. So if you go online to InfoSoup, you can find downloadable magazines. RB Digital also includes classes, so if you want to take music classes, harmonica, ukulele, you can learn all of that on our website. Please call the library if you have any questions about that. We also have Transparent Languages. This is a new resource that allows you to learn 110 different languages. So if you want to learn to speak something from another country, we offer that opportunity. We are involved in the Senior Health Fair, and we're looking forward to coming over to the Park and Rec's building next week, so we'll see you there. Thanks, Mayor Smith.
All right, thanks, Peg. Any questions, comments for Peg? Thank you. I think Henry's going to handle the development director's work. You want to do that now, or you want to do it under yours?
What, could I wait?
Yep, absolutely. You can do whatever you want. You can do whatever you want, as long as I say it's okay. Justin, Public Works.
Thank you, Mayor. My report can be seen on page 56 and 57 on the packet. As usual, starting the wastewater side, our newest employee, Sam Zabel, attended his first DNR-sponsored training course. He's signed up to take his general wastewater exam later this spring. Upon passing that, he will be promoted to operator in training, and then after that, he just needs a few more training courses and some experience to advance a little bit further. In mid-March, or even early March, we had a number of significant snowfalls, and then we had a pretty significant warming event, a lot of flooding in the ditches, and because of that, our treatment plant saw the highest record flows we've ever experienced, at least from what we know in the last 25, 30 years. So a lot of that was the melting snow just worked its way into the manholes. So we treated over 2 million gallons from March 2nd to March 14th on each of those days, with the 14th being the highest, highest at 2.88 million gallons. Evan Street, we completed our pre-construction conference with the prime contractor. We learned a lot of things. We received DNR permitting, so we're ready to go. Trying to finalize the schedule with the contractor, but they are expecting to start within the next couple of weeks. We had our crews out there with the tree removals. We had We Energies out there replacing the gas line. We will have WPS out there and AT&amp;T out there in the next couple of weeks as well, moving their utilities. So we've done quite a bit already, and the project technically hasn't even started, and the public out there have been very good to work with, very understanding, very cooperative. And we're trying to do the best job we can and work with them. So, little heads up, I mean, we're going to be shutting down the road here pretty soon, and I will send out another notification once I have that date pinned down. On Main Street, or for Main Street, we'll be having our second public information meeting on Monday, April 22nd. That's at the Danes Home, the end of North Main Street, from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM, so we will be there. No more representatives from the city. Our designers at SCH will also be there. It's an open format meeting. We do a presentation at 6:00 PM, so please, please come and come see what we've been working on, invite all your constituents, and let's get some input from the public. Waterside, we completed our consumer confidence report. That's our annual water quality report. That's been published. That's out there. It's been returned to the DNR. I have to report that we have another A-plus passing grade on that report, but it is out there on our website. If you want a hard copy, you can call City Hall, call Public Works, call the Water Department, and request a hard copy, and we'll either drive it to you or mail it to you. And since it's, we did the Arbor Day recognition tonight, we received our 25th year of Tree City USA stickers, and we got those put up and posted throughout the city. That's about sums it up.
All right, thanks. Sure, questions?
Yeah. How many wells does the city have in total?
We have seven total wells.
Seven. I looked at the water quality report, and I see that the level of nitrates is below the 10, what is it, parts per million? Is that what it is?
Yep, parts per million, yep.
And it's something, something close to eight, as I recall. That's on average for all seven wells. Is that correct?
No, I don't believe so. I think that one eight was probably from well five. We are required to take nitrate samples out of well five and six at a quarterly basis per the DNR, and the other wells are either on an annual or a biannual schedule. So it's not like an average. That is one single test, and that was our highest one from last year. Eight parts per million.
Okay. And that's, you said that that's from five, or from six, or both?
That's most likely from five. Five is our highest, our well that has the highest concentration of nitrates.
Good. Are you aware of a study being done on wells five and six?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Yeah. I just got informed about it, and there's going to be an article appearing in the paper, I believe.
Yeah, we, we've been working on cooperating with the DNR and UW Extension for a number of years here, studying the movement of nutrients in groundwater out in that watershed. I was going to have a I was going to have a group, that group come here tonight to do a presentation, but the one lady that was going to lead it had some family issues to take care of, so she was not able to make it. So, we had to postpone it till, we're going to, we're going to shoot for one of the May council meetings.
Good. Yeah, I noticed it wasn't on the agenda, but I had heard that she was coming, so.
Yep.
And then, one other question. On the city's septic treatment facilities, are we capturing methane gas?
Yes, we are.
We are?
Yeah. We have an anaerobic digester that takes the solids in our, in our sewage. And yes, it's, basically produces methane gas, which we utilize to reheat the sludge to produce more methane and then also to warm the buildings in the winter time. In the summertime, we have to flare it off when we produce too much.
Hence, that would explain the orders on School Street some days during the summer?
Well, the orders are from the sludge and the anaerobic digester, but not from actually flaring it. It's probably just from, we have a large sludge tank near School Street. It's probably just from that because that is basically the, the resulting material of solids that we no longer can treat. Every spring, about this time, we have trucks come in, load it up and haul it away for a land application.
Thank you.
Yep.
Justin, I have a question. The two, the days that you said you had treated so much water?
Yep.
What's typical on a regular day?
I probably should have mentioned that, yeah. Our typical flows are about 1 million to about 900,000 gallons that we treat at the wastewater treatment plant. So, that increase is, is basically just runoff from the, the melting snow or from rain. What we think typically is just getting into the manholes because ditches are getting flooded, the roads are flooded, and they just go down through the manholes.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions, comments? Justin, thank you. Andrew, Parks and Rec?
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, we'll start with the senior center. They have a couple of activities coming up. Peg briefly mentioned one a little bit earlier. We have the Senior Health Fair next week, April 24th. I believe it begins at 10:00. Should have wrote that down. I think, I believe that it starts at 10:00 o'clock. There'll be a bunch of vendors there to help people out and some free food as well. So, stop on by and check that out. They have a rummage sale coming up on May 16th and 17th, starting at 8:00 AM both days. And that's a fundraiser that they do each year. So, come and find some treasures there as we're going. Parks Riverside, as far as the project that we've been working on down there, or the DNR has been, they are finished as far as what they're going to do this spring. They had to, per our permit, be out of the water on the 15th. And so, they did some cleanup the last couple of days, worked with Josh to make sure everything looks good down there. And if you haven't driven by, it is a noticeable difference. And the cut-through looks very nice on what they fixed. Now, the grasses and that kind of stuff will grow back up, so it won't look so plain for that long. But they'll keep coming back and checking on how the river is reacting throughout the summer. And then they will be back in the fall to work on some of the other steps as we move forward. It's kind of a, a long process. There are some times they can't be in the river and can be because of fishing regulations and some other stuff with the DNR. Serenity Park, we are finally going to get rolling on that. The crew will come in this weekend and that will start Monday morning, bright and early. They plan to be here for about three weeks to get that boardwalk and little fishing outlet and a platform for the seniors to hold classes down there done and doing some cleanup work down there. So, they will be at the rec center 24/7. So, if you see people there at night, those are the ones that are there. So, don't have any alarm there. So, they'll get going on that. Everything else is just getting ready as we've been dealing with some weather stuff as well, snow, not snow, rain, maybe cold, maybe warm. Josh and Casey have been out there working hard to get everything going. Rec Center-wise, all of our registrations are still going. Baseball softball starts very soon. We had a, a unique mother-daughter princess ball this last weekend, was a very big success. I went and checked it out a little bit. Miss Wisconsin came, talked to the girls, signed pictures for them. Just a really neat program. Heard a lot of good things about that. Also, this weekend in the rec center, we had a little issue with our roof and one of our drains coming untapped. So, we, we had a little bit of water in our Blue Gym. We took care of it with a football to block it until they could come on Monday and get it worked out. So, we did get that taken care of and no worse for wear there. We are starting on some spring projects just to make the rec center look good. We'll be doing some painting as we progress into the summer, some outside cleaning that needs to be done. And then fixing some lights out there and some other things. And we also did some painting down in the senior center just to make everything look nice. So, we'll keep that building running and looking good for the future. So, that's all.
Awesome. Thanks, Andrew. Any questions, comments?
Well, again, just FYI, the senior center has opted to be a food vendor for one of the Wednesday night, summer night concerts. So, they're going to set up at the August 14th summer concert with the band and, and sell brats and hot dogs and.
Perfect.
So, that's awesome. Yeah, glad they're doing that.
Yeah, nice. Any other comments, questions? All right, let's move over to Chief Hozell.
Thank you, Mayor. Council. My report can be found on page 33 and run through 48. Our department became aware of a traffic safety grant through AAA. Sergeant Brian Krieger from our department actually wrote that grant. What we asked for was a new speed board. That would be like the ones where I give you the speed board reports in regards to where the traffic's going down the road. If we have problems, it gives us data back. The one that we have right now is really old and we have to replace some parts for it. We also asked for some incident or scene barriers. Those are the ones that you see that may be a, a big white sign that's in the roadway that blocks off that you can't see on the inside, as well as a lighted safety vest for the officers to wear with LED lights. Many times that they're directing traffic, people aren't aware, don't see us with the vests that we do have on. So, everything that, that we asked for is just under $8,000. So, we're waiting to hear back to see if we successfully received anything from that grant. Also, coming up on April 27th is the National Prescription Drug Takeback Day. That's going to be held at the police department in the lobby between the hours of 10:00 and 2:00 PM. Last year, when we did this at this time, we brought in 69.2 pounds of prescription medication that was taken and was destroyed at the crime lab. We're just encouraging members of the community to bring their prescriptions, controlled and not controlled. They can bring inhalers, non-aerosol sprays, creams, pet medication. We don't want them to bring needles, aerosol cans, or biohazard materials, or household hazardous waste. We also, the police department, with the donation account that we, that we have set up where we do our brat fry and with Piggly Wiggly and different things, we ended up purchasing two shotguns for the use of less lethal rounds. What we have right now is pepper spray as well as tasers. However, during certain times of the year, those aren't as effective. When it's 15 or 20 below zero, the tasers don't work if somebody's wearing a jacket. They also, if we have pepper spray, if the wind is blowing or what, and we're outside, those don't work. This is another way for us to use a less lethal opportunity. It gives us up to 25 yards to use the shotguns with the less lethal round to incapacitate the, the suspect and to take him into custody. And that was done through our donation account, again, that we received. We also got on board with the sheriff's department. They, they purchased a bunch of suppressors for their rifles as, suppressors also, maybe some people know them as silencers. If we have an incident with our rifles and we're inside, those are very loud. Those of you who've ever shot guns out to the range, if you're underneath, you know how loud that is and you have to wear hearing protection. We actually took a rifle out with one of the silencers and suppressors, the officers did as well as myself, and shot them out at, out at the range. We shot them without hearing protection and that's very loud. Your, your ears do ring. And then we put the silencers or the suppressors on and it sounded like a 22 being shot. So, we got each of the squads equipped with those because unfortunately, if we would have something inside, there are people that would have hearing problems. And there was an incident where somebody did have a blown eardrum and some hearing problems that happened last year in the county. So, again, with the donation account that we've had the last couple of years, with the fundraising opportunities, we were actually able to purchase all the silencers and suppressors with that. So, that's, that's really nice that, that's not coming out of the budget. That's what we're using that donation money for. And then lastly, on March 26th, we went to the breadbasket and that's money that, again, through our donation account that we have, the officers that were able to go, went there and helped serve meals. And we served 129 meals to the members of the community that night. And it's just nice to see us be able to interact with everybody in the community. So, it was a really good event. And the officers that could not be there, they assisted with baking cakes and that that were brought in. So, that's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Chief. Dave?
Question for chief, but really I probably missed when Justin was giving his report. The intersections on Fulton and Main have had flashing reds, seems like quite frequently. Is there a reason for that?
Yeah, we, we believe there's a short in the wiring underneath the base of the traffic signal. So, Roger was looking into it. We had to get some assistance from Bauer Electric to try and identify where that short was coming from. It's still a work in progress, but anytime it rains or we get moisture that works its way down through the one pole, it shorts out and then it just defaults into red flash.
Any other questions, comments for the chief? All right, let's move on to Mr. IT. Josh?
Completed work evaluating cell phone providers. Our cell contract with CellCom's up and I'll be presenting that this evening. Speaking of phones, a project identified for this year is to get the city a new phone system. Our current system's aging and we've had failures with it over the past couple of years leading to multi-AD outages. So, I've been working with the group of staff on that and that will be at our next meeting. Electronics Recycling takes place next Friday, 11 to 1 at Swan Park. Wapakah Online, now that the weather's been warming up, the guys have been getting busy outside and starting to get back into our expansion project that we have through the end of this summer to finish. Ralph and I have identified a potential area to possibly build a tower that was proposed as part of this project. And we're doing some more due diligence on that to make sure we think that's a good location, but we've identified some more areas where people are unhappy with current service opportunities. And then we're taping our next Wapaka Local Live program. That's a collaboration between the TV station and the Community Arts Board. And we've got Dell Weed in the studio this Thursday, 7:00 o'clock, if you want to check that out.
Awesome. Thanks, Josh. Any questions, comments for Josh? All right. Thank you. All right, Mr. Double Duty here, Henry.
Yes, sir. Mayor, council, my report starts on page 62. I guess I'll start with Brennan's. Justin mentioned the Main Street meeting on Monday. The following day on Tuesday, there is going to be our second meeting. It's being called a community chat and it's about getting input on our zoning code update. And there's a collaboration with the library and their meeting room coordinator to kind of, you know, imagine what the city is like in the future and it's going to be kind of incorporated into the, the discussions. I do not know the start time on that and I do apologize. But it's Tuesday. Also, on the agenda later, there is a development project you'll be considering in the Business and Technology Park. And just as a heads up, the staff through our development review team, we are working on bringing forth a proposal on some right-of-way acquisition work that we're going to need for Main Street. And so, that's, we've been working on that. As far as my area, the OSA Office and the Code of Ethics, we've been doing online the last few years and that's been pretty successful in getting the non-council members, our citizen board members, all signed up appropriately. We also have our city staff review the Code of Ethics as well as we have a fraud policy that we ask the staff to review and sign off on. So, that, that'll be coming forward. Youth on boards, those committees that have students on there, I will be coming to your May meeting just to have a, a short segment on kind of youth adult partnerships. We've done that in the past, but it's been a few years since we've done that. So, just a heads up for those boards that we have youth on. And Mayor, I think that's all I have. Thanks.
All right. Any questions, comments? Yeah, Ellen, go ahead.
Anything on the deer?
Oh, thank you. It is concluded. And as of last week, there was, I believe, 11 or 12 tags. I do not have anything for over the weekend because the 15th was Monday. So, I can follow up with you on that.
All right. Let's move on then. We did table number eight, which is the unfinished business. So, let's go to new business. First one under new business is a request by Bethany Home to sell food items on the city square on July 4th, 2019 from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. And Henry, you want to set this up?
Well, Erin Helgason is in the off, in the audience. If she would like to maybe explain what you want to do and, and maybe be available for any questions.
Good evening. Basically, I'm here tonight because we at Bethany, we'd like to be able to sell food items on the city square, July 4th, from 9:00 AM till noon. Any money raised, we'll go back to the residents for their activity programming.
All right.
That's it.
And I, if you read in the, the letter that was in your packet, they did make, you did make contact with the chamber because that is their day, really, the Fourth of July parade and so on. And they seem fine with that.
Yes, Terry was okay with it.
Okay. All right. Anybody want to make a motion?
Move. Good idea.
Second.
Motion by Hackett, second by Chestnut, that we approve the request by Bethany Home to sell food items at city square on July 4th, 2019 from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Spring election canvas report number 1445. Sandy?
On page 108 of your packet, you'll find the license report showing how many votes every person got that was on the ballot. Scattering just means a write-in. And basically, that's it. We're just approving the election.
All right. So, we'd be, need a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Kealan, second by Fair, that we approve the spring election canvas report number 1445. Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Next up, and Henry's going to be doing this, this has to do with that project out in the South Industrial Drive, but this is the certified survey map for Ken Dugensky. Henry?
Mayor, council, item C and D kind of go together. The first is a certified survey map. The planning commission considered this and is bringing it forward for your approval. I don't know if you want me to go into the development agreement or you want to take action on it?
We can, let's, let's do this as a separate motion here, but the only thing that we did here, how did we do this? I can't remember. We split, did we split?
Well, basically, this is the area right behind where rec school is. It goes back down South Industrial Drive to Godfrey. There's about six acres in that area and this would split that evenly. So, three, three acres plus or minus, 2.947 acres, 2.942 acres would go to the developer, Mr. Dugensky, for his project. And then the balance would be available for future development.
So, we took one lot and made it into two lots so that Lot 1 can accommodate the, the project in the industrial park. Interestingly, in Interestingly enough, we, they were two lots at one time when we made them one, because we thought we had a project, and now we're going back again, so that's what we're doing here. So we need a motion to approve the certified survey map.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mail, second by Olson, that Council approves the certified survey map for the Lot One and Two in the South Industrial Drive. Any discussion? Sandy will call a roll.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Paul Mail.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Scott Pachatski.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
And Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
All right, now let's do the development agreement here.
Okay, this item begins on page one fourteen of your packet. It begins with a memo, cover memo from Brennan, and then behind it is development agreement. Basically, the project involves a project, a construction of a ten thousand square foot manufacturing renovation workspace along with about six hundred twenty-five square foot office area. It would go on that three acres in the CSM at Lot One. Mr. Dugensky is pledging to build a project of a half a million dollars of assessed value, and then in return, the city would provide, as it's proposed, the three acres at no cost. Now, the essence of this agreement, I think, is it protects, there's a provision in there to protect the city during the construction of this to make sure that he gets built and occupies his project, and he has until the end of the year to do that. And if he doesn't, then he does owe the city for the land, at fifteen bucks, fifteen thousand dollars an acre, forty-five thousand dollars. The development agreement was put together by Von Breezen, the firm we use, have used in the past. Mr. Dugensky's here, if you have any questions or anything concerning his project. The Plan Commission did meet last week and review it and recommended and approved, well, approved the site plan. So this will be the last step in the process.
Mr. Dugensky, do you have anything you wanna say?
I guess not.
Okay.
I think you're saying, yes, maybe so.
Well, okay. Any questions, council members? We'd be looking for a motion to-
I'd move to approve the developers' agreement.
Do we have a second? Motion, motion by Keeland, second by Hackett, to approve the development agreement between the City of Wapack and Ken Dugensky Wood Renovators, and discussion.
I just had a question about what products you're gonna be producing and how you're gonna be marketing them, sort of thing.
Can, can you, you should go to the mic, please, and just state your name.
Ken Dugensky. We renovate church interiors. We travel throughout the United States and bring back projects to your, like, for example, right now, we have, what, one in our shop in Iowa that's from here on Lake Minnesota. We have one from Lake Charles, Louisiana, another cathedral from down there. We've got a good reputation. We get a lot of cathedrals for what we do, and actually, we're hoping to get a call from Prance here shortly, but I'd be kinda holding my breath.
Wow. Wow.
Thank you, yeah, thank you.
If I may, what kind of waste do you generate in your renovation?
Waste?
Yeah. Really?
Not a lot, no. Anything that we do is not hazardous. It is hazardous, but we have to take it, and there's some stuff we put with it, like our strippers. We use all hand stripping equipment. We don't use dip tanks and stuff, because that's really bad stuff. That's what we get at work, because with the age of, most of our stuff we do is probably hundred to two hundred years old, or we're making new to match or whatever, so, no, the chemicals, we've never had any problem with in the past. Once we, if there's stripper, for example, that's leftover, we let it dry, and then it's, oh, it's just like flaked. If you just flake this off the top, that's all that's ever left in it. It's not like there's any liquids left or anything, the rest of it, because it evaporates out of there.
So do you have, like, a place outside designated where you would set these cans or whatever to let them dry out?
No, we use barrels. They come in barrels, and the barrels get shipped back to the manufacturer on the Tennessee.
Okay.
And if there's anything that gets done, we can mix it with sawdust, and then it dries, and then it's completely legal.
Is there any sort of verification process to make sure it's being disposed of properly?
I'm guessing I'm not following you. What do you mean?
I'm just wondering if there's any sort of procedures to make sure that it's getting disposed of properly, as opposed to, you know, dumped on the ground or something?
Just our normal procedures that we do, we, I mean, we don't, I guess, we don't dump it in the ground or anything like this. That's what you're asking, no.
Okay.
Because the barrels, anything that is leftover that we can't reuse or whatever, we put it back in the barrels, and they take it back, and they got a, it's a recycling pen or what they do with it, but they take it back to Tennessee where it's made, and then they redo it.
Do you anticipate adding any employees once your facility?
Yes. We're hoping to grow. I'm assuming within, within a year or so, we'll probably be able to be up two, maybe three more employees. That depends, I guess, on the economy. I can't promise nothing, because of whatever happens to the economy, so.
All right. Thanks. Any other comments, questions? Ready to vote? Sandy will call a roll.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Scott Pachatski.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
And Paul Mail.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Ken, welcome, and good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, let's move on to the, as Josh alluded to earlier, this is to do with the cell phone service for the city.
Our current agreement with, current two-year agreement with Cellcom ended this February, and as we do each time our cell phone contract ends, we go out, see what offerings are out there, evaluate them, and see which one best meets our needs and is the most budget-friendly to the city. We did have four responding vendors, Cellcom, Verizon, US Cellular, and Sprint. I heavily involved Chief Hozell in this process, and SIS Department makes up more than half the devices and half the bill each month, and we made sure our Rural Public Works employees that have a safe provider device were included to demo different devices from different providers, just to make sure we had adequate coverage for the city's needs. My recommendations to move forward with Verizon, this time around, they had the best offerings and the best value to the city. As far as the plan goes, they had the lowest cost. Some nice advantages this time around is the cell providers are starting to ramp up public safety offerings, and Verizon had the best in that area, making sure our squad cars have truly unlimited data, so we aren't worried if we're hitting data limits or going over at all, and that helps out with the new squad DVR systems the police department is transitioning to, since that, we'll be using a lot of cell data. They also will prioritize public safety lines, so if there's an emergency and towers are down, our phones, they have this public safety priority, would get priority traffic on the network, making sure they're able to communicate, so there's some nice built-in public safety features. Verizon has no contract length, so if we're with them for a week and don't like it, we can bail. If we're with them a year and another cell provider comes around with a really good plan, we can make that switch at any time, so it gives us some flexibility. It also helps out with adding and removing lines as we go along, as employees change or other city needs change. And they also have the best device replacement cycle, so every ten months, we could be eligible to get new devices at contract pricing if we had that need. And as we evaluated a lot of different things with the plans and the pricing, most of our departments would actually see a cost reduction going with Verizon, based on how their pricing is. The police department would probably see a small increase, but they're getting a huge advantage out of that with the unlimited data and some of the public safety offerings. So I'm looking for approval to enter, no contract length, but enter some agreements with Verizon to get this plan started. Any questions?
I had a question. I saw that with Verizon, we're getting a smartphone incentive credit?
Yeah, some of the providers did have different incentives for signing up for service, and Verizon's offering us a one hundred dollar credit per line that we activate with them that has data, and it's looking like that'll be around eighteen lines, eighteen, nineteen lines, and that credit could be useful if we have any, most of the new phones and new devices we'd get with Verizon would be at no cost, as long as we go with kind of the basic level device, but we're gonna have a couple of devices we'll have to pay for, so we can put that credit toward that or toward the first bill. Yeah.
All right, any other questions? Josh would be looking for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Chestnut, second by Pachatski, that we enter into an agreement with Verizon for cell service for our city-provided devices. Any discussion? Sandy will call a roll.
Scott Pachatski.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
And Paul Mail.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
All right, license report number fourteen forty-six. There are three names on there that are applying for buyer's vendor's license. These are always pending background checks and payments of any fines owed to the city, so we're approving, making sure that those are both okay. So we'd be looking for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hackett, second by Chestnut, that we approve license report fourteen forty-six. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Come on, baby. All right, we're going to the addendum that came out, and that was in your packet, a separate item in your packet, and this has to do with employee life insurance, so I'll turn it over to Kathy.
Thank you, Mayor. We are re-adopting another resolution, because the Department of Employee Trust Funds had a problem with the first one we sent them, so they needed a specific date that this would be effective on. So, this is not an everyday occurrence that they get this request to do, and so they just had a problem with what our, which was using their farm, what we had to do. So, this is going to be effective July first, to coordinate with the ability for employees to elect the spouse independent group life insurance option at their cost, so I, just looking at, it's a housekeeping thing that we're doing with the employee trust funds.
All right. So we'd be looking for a motion to approve this redone resolution here.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Hagan, that we approve resolution fourteen twenty-eight. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. All right, going down to number eleven, communications recommendations of the mayor, a couple things. One, I will not have office hours next week. I'm gonna be on vacation all of next week. And the second thing is, is that I've asked the department heads to reach out to our newest member, Dimitri, and to take them, to introduce their departments and take tours on those, so if there are any council members that would like to be a part of that and retake a tour of something, or if you've never done it, this would be your opportunity. So just contact either the department heads or the clerk's office, and they'll make sure that you get on that list. All right? Anything else for the good of the night? We need a motion to adjourn. Motion by Hagan. Second by Fair, that we adjourn till our next regular council meeting on Tuesday, May seventh, two thousand nineteen, subject to call. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. We're adjourned at seven oh four PM. Have a great night. Drive safe.